Okay. I'd like to call this April 4th, 2018, meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board to Order. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. And just as a heads up, we will need two non-public sessions. There's an issue Jim needs to bring up and the issue of Dr. Mars' contract. So there'll be two non-publics. Are there other changes to the agenda? Hearing none. All of those in favor, please raise your hand.
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry. You're doing a motion. I'm sorry. Moved by Al.
I'll second.
Seconded by Dan. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the agenda is approved. Just got a show of hands, how many people would like to speak tonight? One, two, three, six, seven. Okay. Three minutes. Somebody like to start?
Keith O'Brien, parent of Massway children, fourth and second grade. I live in Lee. I'm speaking tonight about the discussion you all had two weeks ago about the cellphone policy review and about the cellphone survey. I'd like to start with a little bit of background, how we got here. Years ago, other school districts, both in our own backyard and across this country, banned cellphones from their middle school days from bell to bell. And they did so, mind you, with no public debate, no public discussion. There were no surveys, there were no months of study. It was administrators and educators recognizing a clear and obvious problem in their schools, a clear and obvious distraction to education, and taking means to remove that from the school day. While these districts made this decision, our district was moving in a different direction. In recent years, not that long ago, our middle school administrators encouraged, this was their word, encouraged students to bring their phones to school. Because of this decision, repeated over years, the district created a culture where students at the middle school text their friends all day, where they stream videos at lunch, where they're on social media, where they make inappropriate phone calls to 1-900 lines in the playground, and yes, they text home. It is because of the district's decision that we created a culture where apparently 35% of your survey respondents think the situation I just described is just fine. And it's because of the district's decisions over years that we created a culture where a minority of parents feel like they need to be in constant contact with their 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14-year-old throughout the school day. The truth is, we've long ignored our cellphone problem. We've punted it down the road, we've minimized it, and we've ignored it again, which is why we're so thankful for this review that you guys have embarked on. But just because we made mistakes in the past creating this culture, this errant and flawed culture around phones, and just because we created that culture with our decisions, doesn't mean we need to make poor decisions again now. At the last meeting, it was suggested that it would be impossible to ban phones during the school day because certain parents need to be in touch with their children and we need to create five-minute cellphone breaks. I just want to be very clear. Were we to create a loophole, mushy, middle-ground, compromised policy like that, we would be creating quite possibly the first of its kind in this country. You have the models for how this is being done elsewhere. You have the exact wording for how they've, other districts have banned cellphone use at their middle schools, and you have the science that shows very clearly the negative impact of these phones on childhood mental health and on academic achievement. Now...
Keith, your time is up. I'm sorry. Do you have one more point? Go ahead, but...
I do. I have a lot of points, but I will finish. I just want to be very clear, last thing. There is no evidence, none at all, no research, no data, that shows that cellphones make our children safer in the very unlikely event of a school shooting. There's none. But there is a mountain of evidence that shows that these phones are hurting our children every single day. Thank you for your efforts to remove them from our school. Thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
Good evening. My name is Micah Stark. I live here in town. I have a fourth grader at Moheramit and a sixth grader at the middle school. I'm also here to echo everything that Keith just said and raise two points. One, I just learned before coming here from my sixth grader that he apparently completed a survey today at the middle school about cellphone use. And I asked, I think I see most of the communications from the school. I don't recall hearing about that survey. Asked my wife. She hadn't remembered seeing anything. So one is a question I would love for information about that survey, to see the actual survey to be shown with parents. If it has already been sent, I may have missed it. The big point I want to make is sort of what Keith focused on the end. When I think about why my family decided to live in this town, in this district, there's two reasons that come to the top of the list. One is the university, and two is the quality of this district. And the two things that those, that the university and this district have in common is a historic reliance on smart, thoughtful, evidence-based, best-practice research to inform decision-making. You've all received information from us and from Keith. Keith recited it. The evidence is so on one side of this. I'm frankly confused of how we have the existing policy we have in the district. I really hope the district moves quickly and the board moves quickly to change the policy. Again, this is a district that has done really well by being guided by best practice and research, and I hope it does the same in this case as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Good evening. My name's John Bromley. I live on Frost Drive in Durham. I'm also a teacher here at the high school. And I just wanted to, I think, piggyback with what Micah and Keith said a little bit earlier. I have an article here from, that was published a few days after the Parkland shooting, and the title of it is "Should the Parkland Shooting Change How We Think About Phone School Safety?" and so on. And it asks questions, questions in it essentially in one little section here, but do smartphones in student hands really make schools safer, or do they just make them feel safer? Or could they be a cost, could there be a cost to that feeling? And then a little bit later on in the article, they end up quoting a security expert named Ken Trump, and he goes through three or four points around this idea, you know, if there is a counterargument to the desire to remove schools, it seems to be that the argument is one of safety. And Ken Trump, this security expert, says phones can actually make us less safe in a crisis such as the Parkland shooting. He ticks off several reasons. Number one, using phones can distract people from the actions they need to be taking in the moment, such as riding, running, hiding, and listening to the directions of first responders. The reality is, is in our high school, we're using this ALICE protocol that actually relies on teachers to make quick decisions in the event of an emergency. And more than ever, there is the need to have students attentive to the directions of teachers, not even the first responders, but the people that are in the classrooms. So there is a point of, I think, rebuttal to the idea that if a cellphone is out and distracting, or distracting a student from maybe able to, being able to hear the instruction of a parent, of a, I'm sorry, the teacher, to run, stay in the classroom, what have you. I think there's a point to be made there. Number two, he goes on, "The sound of a phone, whether ringing or unvibrate, could alert an assailant to a hiding place." Number three, "The shooter could be monitoring the events themselves on social media." Number four, "Victims and worried family members trying to get through can jam communications interfering with first responders." I have a colleague here in the high school, Matt Pappas, who's a social studies teacher, and he's also on a school board in Rochester. And they, their school board, had a security expert come in and reiterated that exact same point, jamming of lines of communication. And so I really don't want to be in the place of feeding into a culture of fear, which I think that this argument would be coming from. There is, as we've said, a mountain, a mountain of evidence pointing to the fact that there is damage being done, and I think responding to a culture of fear is not the way that we want to go. And truly, I think there's a major point of, to argue, that if one considers the social and emotional connections to phones and violent behavior, or social-emotional connections to anxiety, and how that can lead to feelings of isolation amongst our students and so forth, and those clear connections to violent behavior, there's an argument, as he said, that we're doing more damage than not. Doing more damage by having the phones in place.
Time's up. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yep.
It's me again. I have four children in Oyster River, from Moheramit to the middle school and also at the high school. So I just want to make a couple of brief points this evening. The first is, I do want to draw your attention to the Away for the Day campaign that I believe you were, was referenced in an email that was sent to you. And the Away for the Day initiative was begun by Delaney Ruston, who is actually a primary care physician, and also a documentary filmmaker who made the film Screenagers. And the purpose of this is really a nationwide initiative to motivate communities to remove phones simply away for the day in middle schools. I just want to bring up this point because we are actually not alone in our thinking on policy change and our concern about our policy, but we are indeed part of a larger movement that is happening nationwide. And there's tons of great information on that website. And that, recognizing that we are part of this larger movement and that what we are asking is actually not that radical of an idea at all for middle schoolers to have their phones put away for the day. My second point, which I think has already been said numerous times, is regarding safety. And I just really want to reiterate the fact that there is no evidence regarding safety being increased by the presence of cellphones, and that indeed, they're quite to the contrary, there's an overwhelming amount of evidence that the harm and damage that is being done to, with our children on a daily basis due to the continuous presence of phones, there is clear evidence to that. And finally, I just really want you to look around this room because I personally want to thank Keith O'Brien for everything that he's done in motivating this community, because the people here in this room are that 65% who spoke up on the survey to say that they want this change to happen. And they've continued in the middle of their busy days and busy lives to show up here because we really want to see, it's not about the 65%, it's about your leadership, and we want to see you take on that leadership role and have our kids put their phones away for the day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is my first school board meeting, so...
Welcome. Welcome.
My name is Cecile Gunn Desmond, and I am a mother of two kids. One is in Massway, eight years old, in third grade. The other is five and will be in Massway in the fall. And I'm a professor at the university, a clinical assistant professor of psychology. And so I'm interested both in the cellphone policy as well as the foreign language instruction in middle school. So I am part of the 65% that would say, please put phones away for the day in middle school. We know from numerous studies that kids' psychological development, their emotional development, their judgment-making is not great in middle schools. Their social judgment is clearly not well-developed, and therefore, having access to social media just contributes significantly to bullying behaviors, to impulsive acts, to posting on social media that has significant damage, not only on their own well-being because of the consequences of their ill-informed and poorly-made decisions, but also on the whole community at large in terms of the kind of extensive effects that can happen with bullying and the consequences of that, right? And we've, as a district, I know, have experienced some significant consequences of that too. And I would hate for that to continue because of access to cellphones during the school day in middle school. The other issue that I'd like to speak about is the foreign language instruction. I want to advocate fully for the hiring of another foreign language instructor at the middle school, and ultimately, to have foreign language instruction in the earlier grades. The sooner these kids are exposed to languages other than English, the more readily they learn them, the more easily they take on the sounds, the more quickly they become fluent. It is such an important issue and goal, and I think it serves a number of purposes. One, we know that the language acquisition window, the sound acquisition window for kids ends at age 11. So around, somewhere between 10 and 12, kids stop the ability, or they lose the ability to learn new sounds, to make new sounds. And therefore, learning a language after that age compromises their ability to speak it fluently, which is why so many other school districts, high-performing, high-level, highly-respected school districts like our own, have started language instruction in the elementary years, second grade, starting out with exposure programs, cultural education, language exposure. So one is the sound acquisition. The other is a measure of diversity. If we're teaching culture to these kids at a younger age, that would in some ways partly address the issues of mainstream Western white culture that we have in this community, and it would broaden kids' exposures to other countries, other cultures, other languages, and other things. And the earlier we do that, the sooner we do that, the more we're comfortable with difference, the more we're comfortable with other languages and other people. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve Vorgiotis, and I have a daughter who's in kindergarten at Massway. I grew up here in Durham. I went to UNH for my undergraduate degree, and it was in linguistics and cognition. I studied how children acquire languages after the first one. And I would like to echo everything that Cecile just said. That language window closes, and there's clear phonology cutoff, but also just the ability to absorb new vocabulary, new lexicon, new grammar. If we want our children to learn languages and to learn them well, every year before that cutoff makes a tremendous difference. I studied five languages. I studied French, Spanish, Italian, Russian, and Japanese, and I speak none of them fluently. I didn't get anything until eighth grade when I joined Oyster River, and that language was starting to cut off for me as well. However, all that time that I spent enabled me to make connections in my work travels around the world. It helped me to make connections with people here in Durham who are from other parts of the country, or other parts of the world, excuse me, and also when we lived in San Francisco for 16 years. Those connections are important. And in addition to the cognitive capabilities that are developed in our children, the cultural awareness, there's also an aspect of citizenship. And if we want our children to be exposed to more than just Durham, I think it's important for us to introduce this to them early. Please bring language as early as we can. We're doing that for our daughter. She's six, finishing her second season of Chinese and her third of Spanish. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Belle Vukovich-Knoyer. Oh, now I'm nervous.
That's all right.
So this is my first school board meeting. Maybe that's my second. But I'm the mom of triplets at Moheramit, and I'm here to talk about cellphones. So I was really delighted to see in my email today, of course, I'm referring to my cellphone, about the social media awareness, something that's coming to the district next week. And I thought, wow, that means they get it. That means that they are definitely going to be looking to having our middle school and eventually high school students not have access to cellphones in school. But trust, but verify. And so that's why I'm here, because I also want to say, this is something that our district has put out and says, we see, you know, access, easy access to social media as landmines for our children. I think that's an understatement, particularly when it's not regulated or chaperoned, if you will, by parents. And so I just want to put my voice, my husband's voice, behind the push to get cellphones out of the school day. It's really unnecessary. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name's Derek Sowers. I live in Durham, and I have two kids in the Oyster River School District. Keep this short and sweet. I just want to really urge you to respond to the comments tonight on the cellphone policy. Do the right thing, the evidence-based thing, and please keep cellphones out of the middle school. They don't belong there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Scoglan. I live in Durham. I have two daughters in Massway, one in first grade and one in fourth grade. I guess I'll touch on two topics tonight, much like a few of the other speakers. The first is, I, as in my last meeting, strongly urge you to ban cellphones during the entire school day. Our girls do not have cellphones, nor will they have cellphones until the probably last possible moment, and they would be dumb phones to begin with. I got my first phone in July, smartphone, for much of the same reasons that have been brought up in terms of the negative impacts that it can have on emotional, social, and academic development. But my kids are not going to be in a vacuum. They go to school in a community, and we moved to this community because of the expectation of what the Oyster River school system would be able to offer. I think the school, the cellphone policy in its current form is a significant flaw, and the discussion that I've heard, I was not aware of the five-minute cellphone break that was raised last time. That sounds like management for addicts, not an academic decision. I also have a letter, it's actually the same letter that I delivered in April of 2016 regarding the Chinese policy. It sounds like we're a little bit closer to making a determination of whether fifth grade or language would be offered for all languages in middle school, and we're hoping that you would extend it to all languages, including French and Spanish, so that we can bring it for Chinese. My daughter Hazel, who's in fourth grade, has been involved in the after-school Chinese program since the beginning, and it's something that we've been very impressed with. From the start, she claimed she didn't know anything, but she was reading the Sri Racha bottle, at least some of the characters off the back of that. And when we went to Wendy's a couple weeks ago, she and her classmates were translating the Chinese couple next to us, even though I kept telling them to stop doing that, that was very rude. What I found to be wonderful about that is that Chinese is a tonal language. I can't hear what my daughters can hear because they started when they were five and six years of age. And making sure that kids have access to that early experience, as I believe C.C. and others have alluded to, I think is a tremendous asset. And I would advocate very strongly that we bring it as far down into middle school as possible and then into the early elementary grades later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
My name is Eric Johnson. I have a son who's a kindergartner at Massway. I have another son who will be in about a year and a half. On behalf of my wife Stephanie, I'd like to also lend my voice in support of expanding the foreign language instruction to the fifth and the sixth grade level. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. Thank you all for your comments. Tom, we have one more. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Fair to be the last one. My name's David Buck, 42 Woodman Road. I circulated an email, I think, to everyone on the board probably a month ago about, excuse me, summarizing the other policies for other middle schools that are within New Hampshire, and I think that we like to evaluate ourselves relative to. I wouldn't really plan on saying anything tonight, but I bumped into a teacher from the middle school on the way here, mentioned that I was coming, and he, I felt like I should sort of share that quick story. He just said to me, in my classroom, fifth-grade classroom at the middle school, there's no class, no phones are allowed. I would never allow it, end of story. He did iterate, communicate to me that there's a one-to-one question, I guess, about access to technology in the classrooms, and I assume that is something that the school board is considering. This particular teacher sits on the technology board at the middle school and had a very clear and quick response to the issue of cellphones in his classroom, and I hope you would take that into consideration in your decision-making going forward. I recognize that there are subtleties in that with the one-to-one question, and that requires, you know, there's budgetary implications to that, but I imagine your community members here in the town and in the district would be more than willing to engage in that discussion where we're introducing technology into the classroom that is welcomed by the teachers as opposed to a strategy that introduces technology in the classroom with the teachers, at least this one, sample of one. And I imagine it's echoed amongst his peers, do not want. So I think there are some differences with technology that I hope you would consider very much.
Thank you. So, anyone else? Okay. Come on.
Ellen Moriarty. I have three children at Massway. I'm completely unprepared, but luckily for all my peers in the community, I've definitely stayed up to date on this issue. But I just want to put out there how passionately I am opposed to my fifth grader being in the middle school next year and being exposed to this. I also am just so, I guess, confused why there would even be a need for these cellphones in the fifth through eighth grade. My children are at school all day, K through 4 at Massway. I don't have contact with them. If I need to, I can call the secretary or email. I just don't understand what the need is. If the need is for technology, I guess maybe I'm naive, but if it's for technology, I would just feel that the school would be providing the technology that these students need. And it makes me want to cry to think about my fifth-grade girl going, I don't know, to the middle school, to this environment. We don't have this social media environment in my house, nor will we. I think about myself back in fifth and sixth and seventh grade and how difficult that was without any kind of technology or social media. It still kind of haunts me a little bit. So I thank you, all the community, who has kept me informed, particularly Keith, and I really, really, really appreciate you relooking this policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Tracy Benkosky.
I have two kids at Massway. I'm also a teacher here at the high school. Just really briefly, I wanted to say that I'm really in support of a stricter policy at the middle school. From my experience as a teacher, I've been in the classroom since cellphones showed up, and the pendulum has definitely swung both ways. When they first showed up, it was, you know, absolutely no cellphones, and then I feel like it swung back the other way where it was kind of whatever goes. And I do feel like we need something that's more reasonable for today and for the age range. I'm a teacher at the high school, and I've, that's where I've seen cellphones. I can see the academic use of them at the older ages, but even then, I spend, I find myself spending more of my day saying, please put your phones away, taking phones from people, you know. It's, it's a distraction. It is a distraction. Second thing I wanted to say is that I really support adding another language teacher to the fifth grade. Both of my kids have been in the Chinese program for a couple of years, and I really hope that my fifth grader next year will have the choice to take language. Thank you.
Thank you. It's half an hour, so I think I'm going to call it unless somebody wheels set. Okay. Thank you all for your comments. Could we have a motion to approve the March 14th, 2018, regular minutes? Brian?
Motion to approve the March 14th, 2018, regular meeting.
So I had asked that we postpone it to this meeting, and I went back and watched, and to me, there was a lot of conversation at that meeting of very important matters. And I wrote what I thought was important to state in minutes, but then I have my doubts, because we talked at the board whether, what our minutes should be. And so my additions are significant, because it really, I thought I made significant comments. So I guess if the board feels that we don't want that in minutes, then, you know, I'll just be done with minutes. But I would hope that at the board, we really reflect the discussion at the table. I don't think many people have the time to go and watch online a meeting. It took me forever to watch it, and I think minutes are very important. So I think before I give what I think, I think as a board, we should decide what our minutes should be. And Laura, this is no call to you. It's incredibly difficult to take minutes and to reflect that.
Well, it seems to me there's two. I mean, if you want to have a discussion about the philosophy of minutes, I think that becomes a discussion item at some point.
So I'll just give what I have as my changes, then. That's okay. So on page three, so it's under B, and we're talking about, so I'm commenting, "Three students walked out of the middle school," and then I recognize the high school students who will be doing so in April, and then I put that it was in support of ending gun violence and making our country's schools safer. Thousands of students walked out of schools all across the United States, and they should be applauded and admired.
Denise?
So I guess my question is, if, should, and this is just a question for you, in terms of, as Kenny's reading these, because they are long, if we have specific, you know, certain places where we think, yeah, this is okay, or this is too long, should we wait until, I'm just wondering if we should tackle it, like, each section, or wait for the whole thing? Because I'll just get, in that example, just, I had no problem with the first part of what you said in terms of, it was about gun violence, and I totally get that, but then I felt like the part about thousands walked out, and that was more...
Editorial.
Yes, exactly.
It was more what?
Editorial.
Right, but I did say it, and it was very important, and I thought it very important to make the point at the meeting. So, right, everything we say is editorial. There's not anything we say that isn't our opinion. This whole cellphone issue is editorial. It's, we're using the science, how we see fit, and we make decisions, we see the world, and we make decisions on the board. There's nothing that's not, that's what a board does. We edit, we're editors. We're not, we're not the people who are going to be doing the audit tonight.
Doesn't really change the point of that paragraph, though, right? I mean, it's still, you're still saying the same thing. You're just adding more verbiage into it. And it doesn't really change the point.
I get it, and I'll take back all the others. It's okay. I get, you guys don't want to go back.
I mean, I would be willing to just postpone it to another time and have you, I think different people have different senses of how fully they want their comments recorded. And personally, I don't, you know, I'm not concerned myself that I get this fully recorded. I think you would like to see a fuller recording sometimes.
Not so much fuller, Tom. It's that I feel the gist of my message, the thing that I was trying to say, is not captured.
Okay.
You know, there's lots I go on with that's irrelevant, but this was, this was the crucial point to the message, is our country was facing, is facing a crisis, safety in school, and we had kids walk out all over, and to not talk about that, and not to put it in the...
Okay. I'm wondering whether, rather than us go comment by comment, whether we could postpone one more time, have you give your, you know, I don't know whether you could give your comments to Laura, have those incorporated, then we could approve the minutes the next time. Is that, how would people feel about that?
Can I make a, why don't you give us the comments in advance? Because that way, I don't, it's kind of hard, I really dislike wordsmithing at the table. It's a painful process. If we can make it less painful, it'd be great. If people are trying to figure out, is it too editorial, or is it missing the point, or whatever, it would be super helpful if we could have them in advance. People can digest them.
But Al, that's exactly why I raised the philosophical thing before I gave you my comments. I'm not asking you to wordsmith what I said. I know what I said. And the point is, do we want the minutes, how much do we want the minutes to reflect the gist of the conversation at the table? This isn't wordsmithing. This is whether, whether we want to include detail and gist or not, and that's, and so I don't...
I'm just saying, it's hard for me to judge that if I don't see it in advance, and it's like, this is kind of a, it's a difficult situation, a meeting itself, to try to think. I mean, I try to think quickly. If you give people a heads up, they can deal with the deeper philosophical issue behind it, you know.
I think, I think there are different times when we want ourselves recorded more fully than other times, and I think clearly this is a time, you know, I think if the, the thing is, everything should be recorded fully, we're going to have minutes that are going to go on, you know, very difficult to take minutes that way. I'd like to propose we postpone the approval of the minutes from the 14th. You give us, either incorporate those into, give those to Laura so she could incorporate those, give them to us, and then we can approve the minutes. Otherwise, I think we're just going to spend a lot of time. I think to say minutes should be full or not full, I think they could be endless, you know. It's a difficult thing. I think there are points when we really want to have certain things recorded, and I think clearly that was the case here. And so I think I would want to see, if you feel, you know, your remarks weren't recorded as fully as you'd like, I would like to see us put those in, because it's, you know, I'd like to see that happen. So, but I'd like to see them ahead of time. So if we could postpone the approval of the minutes to the next time, and we either get them in advance so we can see, see what additions are going to be made.
I just have a comment. And again, I've struggled with this in terms of, sometimes I've looked at it, and I felt like, you know, I've said this long thing, and it's like in the minutes for a minute, I mean, one sentence, and again, it does come back. So I, you know, again, sometimes I'm just like, well, you know, I just accept what's there, and so I hear what you're saying, because I have had that feeling as well at times, and I do think it is a philosophical one of whether, you know, we're willing to accept this sort of, you know, the gist of what we're saying, or like you say, are we going to expand out? And I agree, if it's something that you feel strongly about, then I'm fine, but I personally would have an issue, I guess, if, you know, everything that Kenny Rotner says is like this long, and every, you know what I'm saying? Just because there have been times that I know for myself, I've just accepted the fact that I've said a lot, and it's been whittled down to one sentence. So I just feel like we should be equitable, I guess, is what I'm saying, but I have no problem if there's one thing you really feel strongly about.
Besides for the statement I made about football, I've never asked for anything like this, and other people have, and I thought they were important issues. So I'm not asking every word I wrote more be stated.
So is it reasonable to postpone the approval of these minutes one more time, and then we can get these, because it sounds like there's several additions. Is that correct, Kenny? Okay. Just get those, either get those to us in advance, and we can make sure those get added. Is that all right? Okay. Is that agreeable to everybody? Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the March 21 regular minutes? Denise?
I motion to approve the March 21 regular meeting minutes.
Moved by Denise. Is there a second? Second by Brian. Are there changes to these? Denise?
Yeah, I just have one word. So it's on page five. I'm not in there right now, but it's actually when Kenny's, it's actually Kenny's motion. And what it says currently is, it says recommendation, and my understanding is, it's really supposed to be bringing back information, not a recommendation, so that's my recollection, and so that's my suggestion, is just to replace the word recommendation with information. It's like halfway down, it's his motion.
Which page? I'm sorry?
It's on page five. It's Kenny's motion, paragraph four, yeah. It says to go forward and examine policies at other schools and bring back their, it wasn't, my recollection, anyway, it wasn't to bring back a recommendation, it was to bring back the...
Information, yeah. Yeah, that would be my understanding. Is that agreeable, Kenny?
Sure.
Okay. Are there, are there changes?
I don't know where it is, but there was a vote where I abstained, and it was listed as six dash one instead of six zero one.
Okay.
So it probably was with the teacher's contract or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. With those changes, are there others? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. The minutes of the 21st are passed. We have the non-public minutes of the 21st. Could I have a motion to approve those? Brian?
Motion to approve non-public minutes.
Moved by Brian. Is there a second? Second by Denise. Changes? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. Those minutes are approved. So we will hold the 14th minutes till our next meeting. Announcements, commendations, comments from the district?
Good evening. I would just like to let everyone know that Meredith Freeman-Capel and Grace Smith are going to be nominated at the NAMI New Hampshire Annual Conference. NAMI is the National Alliance on Mental Illness, and they're going to be nominated for Building Resilience and Finding Hope. It's, we're really excited about the work that they have done here at the high school that Meredith has done with the drama production, One Who Flew Over Cuckoo's Nest, and all of the work that she's done. So thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie Vash from Mastway. I just wanted to let everyone know that both Mohairamet and Mastway are planning their spring presentations, a production of Peter Pan Jr. Mohairamet will be presenting here at the high school on Tuesday, April 17, 6:30 p.m., and Mastway will be hosting theirs on Wednesday, the 18th, same time, 6:30, so I hope you can all join. In May, we'll, I'll give you more information about this as it gets closer, the PTO at Mastway will be hosting their annual May fair, which is always a great time. It'll be on Friday, May 11th. Thanks.
Others? No? From the board? Kenny?
More for the administrators at our schools. I was involved at a meeting today with town representatives and UNH representatives, talking about what in the past has been the Senco de Mayo kind of events in town, and it's greatly affected our school district with canceling after-school activities, and even at once a consideration what to do about school. This year, it is on the Saturday, and UNH last year, besides student behavior in town, there was also kind of a big issue of appropriation of culture, which was very offensive to many UNH students, and to some extent, it echoed and fed into, played into what we did and were involved with, with our community in the fall, and tolerance, and talking about diversity. So UNH, very concerned about impact in town, and also that issue, cultural issue, is trying to get that day to be different, and they're calling it a day of unity, and they're looking at it to be a day of service, and activities are planned for students to be involved in community projects, and just really trying to hope to kind of flip that kind of tenor that it's been. And so reaching out to administrators, if there's something at your building level on that Saturday that you think would be very beneficial to your school, cleaning up grounds, doing something, UNH students want to participate and be a part of that. And so if you maybe let me know, and I can connect you with the people involved, but we're looking for things that are very positive for students to be involved with and to share with the community.
Okay. Thank you. Last Thursday, I attended a press conference at the State House where a number of state organizations, the school board's administration, the administrators' organization, National Education Association, parent-teachers associations, these state organizations, all came out in opposition to Senate Bill 193. I did not speak. I was there, but I was happy to support that, that press conference and those positions. Also, just to go back to the issue of visits to schools, you authorized Brian and I to visit schools. Brian and I visited, was it last Friday? Yeah. Friday, visited Lebanon and Hanover, and I visited with Jay and Todd, visited Portsmouth today. I think we have one more visit, Stratum, coming up. Also, as I alluded to in an earlier comment, I asked Jay if I could get some sense of how many kids in the school have cellphones, and how often they communicated with their parents during, you know, during the day, and that information just came at the end of the day, and that will come, come to the board, I thought, particularly given the comments from parents about communicating during the day, just how frequent that is. And so we'll have pretty interesting information, you know, they'll be available for the 20th, just how much parent-kid conversation during the day goes on. So that's, that's what was alluded to before, and that'll be available to everybody. Okay? Yeah?
Next Saturday, April 14, is the 26th Annual Mohairamet Pancake Breakfast.
Okay.
It's the 14th?
It's the 14th. It is the 14th, right? And the bear on my shirt is emblematic of the year before us, which has been observed all school year long at Mohairamet.
Thanks.
Eight to noon.
Other comments from the board? No? Assistant Superintendent?
Good evening. Just a couple of things I wanted to share with you. First off, the REACH program catalog will be out by the end of this week. I know, previously I had said we'd get it out by the end of March, but we have had a couple of complications get in the way. We had an organizational meeting with all of our instructors canceled by a snow day, and it took us a while to get them pulled together, and we have had a few of our traditional instructors that have been with us quite often have chosen to scale back their involvement, so I've had to do a little recruiting to fill all the camp slots, but I'm pleased to report we have nine camps running each of the first three weeks, and then eight camps the last two weeks, and that will be coming out, I'd say tomorrow, but I haven't had a chance to check with Deb Byrne to confirm that she's ready to go, but assuming she is, the REACH catalog will be out tomorrow or Friday. Please be looking for it. And again, as I've said before, it's a great program, partnership with the Durham Parks and Recreation Department. It can be a half-day in the morning with the school-sponsored enrichment programs, full day if you want to also do the Durham Parks and Rec afternoon camp program, and full week if you want to join in on the Friday field trips that the Durham Parks and Rec Department run, in addition to the fact that free lunch is served Monday through Thursday in the middle school cafeteria for all participants. It's a great program, so please be on the lookout for the catalog. It will be out before the end of this week. Second thing I wanted to mention, I had the pleasure of going over to Mohairamet yesterday afternoon to observe a, an activity that was being sponsored by the Sustainability Club. I want to thank Maggie Morrison for her efforts on that. They brought in a facilitator to work with kids on reusable, renewable energy, specifically using solar panels and that sort of thing. They worked with all of the fourth-grade classes in both of the elementary schools. It was a great activity, and they also provided some wonderful professional development for fourth-grade teachers after school, and they were, and all of them were in Tony Lee's class until about 5 o'clock the other day, working on that. So it was, it was a very inspiring thing, and they left with lots of new toys for the teachers to be able to work with, that are all activities that align with next-generation science. So it's really good stuff. Thank you for the sustainability people for putting that together. On the same theme of science, I didn't want to just mention, we are in the final stages of reviewing and updating the K-5 science curriculum. We will be coming to you with a comprehensive presentation in the month of May to share with you the work we've done. We've developed competencies aligned with the next-generation science standards around scientific practices, aligned that with standards, and the teachers are really beginning to dive into how this is going to be rolled out and implemented next year. So it's really exciting, so I look forward to you hearing about that. You heard, on a final note, you heard a number of people... You heard, on a final note, you heard a number of people commenting on the world language program and the desire to strengthen and, and expand that. I had a great opportunity last week to work with the entire middle school, high school, world language department all day, looking at proficiencies, proficiency targets, and there's really challenging them to think very differently, I think, about the way we structure and package world language curriculum. Historically, we've had this, the notion of French I, French II, kind of like these, these content units that kids kind of progress through. This is really beginning to turn the focus to proficiency. In other words, the goal is to have our students graduate proficient in whatever that target language is, and we're really beginning to look at it as a, hopefully, a seven or more year sequence for kids to really be exposed to a language and hopefully, ultimately having more and more kids graduating from high school with proficiency in a foreign language. The world language teachers will be here at the next, next board meeting to give you kind of an update on that, and they're very excited to share that with you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Others? Superintendent's report?
Thanks, Tom. A number of things I want to inform the board on. So, we did our annual enrollment for kindergarten, and so far, our enrollment for kindergarten is actually much lower than it's been in the last three years. We currently have approximately 40 kindergarten students enrolled, registered for next year at Mohairamit and 45 at Mastway. So, the ratio between Mastway and Mohairamit's maintained, but the number of kids is dramatically lower. So, if we can take up to 58 students per grade, Mohairamit has 18 spaces and Mastway has nine spaces. What that says to me and to the two elementary principals is that we have one position more than we need currently at, at the elementary level. You might recall that we were going to add a position at Mastway. So, what drove that is the kindergarten enrollment. So, we had four budgeted at Mastway currently. We only need three, and it's unlikely we'll need more than three based on a previous paradigm of enrollment. So, we'll be watching that over the course of the spring to see whether that dynamic changes. I would tell you that both principals have reached out exhaustively to preschool programs, to their families, to make sure that, you know, that the youngsters are showing up. But right now, it's pretty low, so we think we may have, we're pretty confident we have one extra teacher at the elementary school budgeted.
So, what does, what does that mean?
It means that it offers you a certain level of flexibility when we talk about world language at the elementary. So, we can come to that when we get to that conversation now.
Sorry, Jim, what was the maximum number of kindergartners we would accommodate at each school?
Fifty-eight at three, three class, fifty-six, excuse me, fifty-
That's still not divisible by three.
Eight, eight, eight. Fifty-four. I just had to do it, sorry, Michael. Fifty-four. So, 14 spaces at Mohairamit and nine spaces at Mastway. Another update in relation to health insurance, we did catch the break. We may, you might recall that the guaranteed maximum health insurance rate for us last fall was 5.4%. It actually came in at .3%. So, that free, that, that means that we have $275,000 that we will not need to cover health insurance costs for next year. So, again, there's some flexibility this creates. I just want to remind the board that we used up all of our emergency fund to, to fund this budget year, and one of the goals you have was to restore that, and that was a $500,000 emergency fund, and we used every penny of it. So, as we see this money getting freed up from what we thought we were going to use it for, we can use it to cover our emergency fund, at least partially, in the next school year. And that was one of your goals. I just, I did want to remind, and we have told the world, that the Durham Police Department is, is hosting the social media event Monday night at 6:30. This is something that the community has been asking for. I just want to praise the police department in Durham for their efforts in this, in this area, and I hope that families can, can make it. I wanted to bring you up to date on the middle school facilities committee. I gave you a written communication in your file, in your folder, and, you know, the committee has been represented by Michael and, and Tom, and so, part of my goal today is just to bring everybody up to speed on where we are with the, remember, the stated goal was to bring recommendations back to the board in May or early June. So, the options that the committee has been working through is looking whether renovation of the current building makes sense. That would be number one. Number two would be building a new school on site. Number three would be building a new school on site but changing the grade configuration. Number four would be adding the middle school to the high school. Number five is building a sixth-through-eight middle school and sending the fifth grade back to the elementary schools. Build a seven, number six is build a seventh and eighth grade middle school and change the elementary schools to K-through-six. Number seven was add grades five through eight to each elementary school, making them K-through-eight schools. Number eight would be to tear down portions of the existing school and replace with new construction. Number nine is to build a new grade six-through-eight middle school on a new location and expand the elementaries to K-through-five. Number 10 was to change the elementary schools in their configuration, one being K-through-four and the other being five-through-eight. And number 11 is to build a K-through-eight on a different site. And I lost my place. And, oh, and sell the current middle school. Yep, thanks. Build a new high school and put the current middle school in our high school. And number 13 was to explore building a new regional high school with other school systems. So, the committee's been meeting on a monthly basis, and the goal of the committee is to take that list of 13 and get it down to a viable two or three, and pass those recommendations off to the school board. So, that's the work that they've been doing on a monthly basis, and I just wanted to make sure everybody was up to speed on where we were on, on that work. Any questions there? Denise?
Just if you could remind me, when, when do you foresee having this whittled down in the presentation to the board as far as what the recommendations are?
So, Thursday night, they'll be looking at off-site options, and, and then the homework between this meeting and the next meeting is for the committee to come back with the top two or three options that they've seen. Michael's been a real asset. He's taken very diverse spreadsheet information and put it together in a very colorful and easily-read compilation of the results. As I looked at them as an individual, not as part of the committee, I think, you know, several of the options really are coming forward, which is exactly what you would expect to see. So, the committee hasn't just been, you know, going back and forth on issues, they've really taken a very systematic approach to the 13 options, and then they've, they've put their individual results down, and then we talk about them collectively. So, I think we are well on track to be able to bring back those two or three options to the full board in either May or June, which is exactly where we want it to be. Any other questions related to that? All right. So, going back to communications, I was, I just wanted to share with the board that the administrative team has really taken to task in terms of making sure that we're sharing the news of the district. We had a pretty extensive meeting administratively where each unit and division brainstormed things that they felt were important to communicate with the district. Couple of examples, you know, at the high school would be the master schedule as an example. As those news releases go out, what I plan on doing is putting them, even though you may see them in Fosters, I, it's possible in your busy days that you miss them. And so, each month, I'm going to compile them and put them in your folders, or each meeting for that, as that, as that goes. At the end of every month, what I'll do is I'll take these news releases and send them out district-wide, so, to try to, to improve our ability of getting what's going on in the district out. So, every meeting, you'll get the finished news releases, and then, once a month, we'll send those news releases out across the district. I also, in terms of communication, had a conversation with Tom and Denise, and one of the things that I felt like was, as I analyzed your feedback on, on communication, was I was using a summative approach to your goals. So, just like if we just talked about the middle school one again for a second, you guys establish the goal, and then we go off and work on the goal, and the next time you usually hear about the goal is when the work is done and we present it. The problem with that is it could be nine months before you hear about that goal again. And so, what I did was I, I created a spreadsheet, never as pretty as Michael's, I should give it to Michael, and he could make it look really cool. But I took the, the goals that you approved at the beginning of the year, and then, as a demonstration to Denise and Tom, what I, what I said was, I really want to touch these goals three times a year, every year. So, the idea is you establish the goal, and then when you hear about the goal again, it should be how are we organized to address that goal? When you hear about the goal again, it would be the progress report on that goal. That would give the board a chance to adjust direction, make sure we're heading in the right direction. If there's additional information or questions that you need addressed, we can then incorporate that into the work. And then the summative report on how we did on that goal. And I, I'm thinking between the news releases and coming back, cycling through these goals, that we'll never get into a situation where you all feel like, where did that come from? That's a surprise. We hadn't heard about this, that kind of thing. And that would keep you posted throughout the school year. And then, if necessary, I can do what I'm doing tonight, which is just capture something in the superintendent's report if some, something dramatic is, is changed, which you'll hear about when we talk about world language. So, that's, is there any question on that? Does that make sense to you guys, different approach in how we're doing this work?
I just have a critique, actually.
Okay.
Okay, can you break up your, you have a lot of text here. Can you break it up with some pictures? It'll look a lot nicer. It's like, I know, I do, I, I, you know, say this as someone who's putting out an article every week, it's like there's a lot of text there. It's like you want to make it a little more attention-grabbing, grab some photos, throw them in there, it'll make your, wrap around your text, it'll look a lot better. If it's a press release, make it look nice. My critique.
Good suggestion.
Yep.
And we'll include pictures as we can, because we need permission from parents if we use pictures of kids, which is a okay. I think if you looked at Doris, she had all kinds of beautiful pictures of fruits and vegetables, so we'll do a better job as we go forward and, and do this work. Any other questions? Any, does it make sense in terms of keeping you better informed? Does it sound like it'll keep you guys better informed?
Yep. And it seems to me like you're saying is that what are the stories you want to get out, be really proactive and, you know, being deliberate. There's something every month that should be going out, which I think is a good-
So, our goal is a minimum of eight stories a month through all the divisions. So, that would mean that you might get multiple stories from one division and none from another, and then another month, it might be multiple division, stories from a, from a different division. So, we're not trying to say each person has to put out a, a story, but that in total, we, our goal is to hit eight. And we can't control whether the press prints it, but we can control whether you see it and whether our community sees it. And so, we can take care of that issue through the monthly issuance of these press releases.
Good.
All right. And then, the last thing is, I mentioned this once before, and I just want to bring it back to you. In your report, in your folder tonight, you have the final draft of the New England League of Middle Schools, NELMs, certifying, or, yeah, certifying that our middle school is now a blue-ribbon school.
Spotlight.
Spotlight school. Got confused there for a second, thanks. Spotlight school. And I just want to, you know, bring home that this is one of six in the entire New England region. So, you know, we talk about big deals, the high school getting accredited, and now our middle school being recognized, that's one middle school of six in the entire New England region. That is a huge honor, and I really wanted to bring that back. And if at any point the board would like to have Jay do a presentation on the report, I'm sure he'd be willing. That's it for me, Tom.
Thank you. See, Tim, is he here, is it?
Yep. Jim, who?
Business administrator, the audit?
Yeah, thanks.
Is that, is it?
Yeah, no, that would be me.
You? Okay, I didn't know.
And I just had to find my agenda again.
Okay.
I feel so disorganized.
So, I think we're in the audit now, and then you'll be, you'll be, soon.
So, I wanted to share the audit piece until Sue comes back, and I would tell you that Sue would be here, but she is, is out for personal reasons. And I just, so if you don't mind, I'll just let Sue do that when she comes back.
Okay.
And then, then we'll, we'll introduce Jim Rozicki in relation to the Siemens bids and to give an update on the Mastway project. So, Jim, you can come to the podium.
You are up.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for having me back. I'm here to give an update on where we're at with Mastway build and Siemens project, how that's unfolding. We spent a lot of time together in the fall reviewing all this stuff at length, and it hasn't slowed down since, so, a lot of information to kind of unpack, but I felt just hitting the key points and what's transpired so far will be helpful. So, in regards to the Mastway addition, I'm going to keep, talk on two separate projects. We got the, both the classroom and the main office addition build with Bowin Construction, separate from Siemens. So, over that time, between the fall and right now, Sue, I got to give credit to Sue Caswell. I dragged her around to two planning board meetings in the Town of Lee, a select board meeting. We did a site walk with community members and, and the community. We did a Mastway parent form where Dr. Morris did a great presentation. I think, Brian, you were there as well. So, it's, it's been a lot, and it's great to see that the members of the Lee political community have really support this project. Carrie and I spent time just sitting down with everybody that was going to be impacted by this build, both in the main office and the rear classrooms, just to get their final opinion on the design, roll it out to them, really take their concerns and ideas to us, which we have either given straight up to our architects to consider, or came back and said that that wasn't doable. So, I, I hope that the building staff is pleased with what we've done so far. Big deal on this was how are we going to have construction happen while kids are in session? So, the really big deal with the planning board and, and the Town of Lee Select Board was giving permission, getting permission to drive on town property where the ballfield is, so we can have trucks safely access that area instead of going around through the playground to keep kids safe, and that was all good. As of right now, we're 95% completed with the engineering plans. The GC is bidding out all those specifics, so we're starting to get numbers back in. Well, we haven't yet personally, but our GC has. The remainder of the 5% is really on our end also as far as color selection. We've had a wave of different materials for exterior finishes, odds and ends, flooring, that type of thing, so that, that last 5% is, is pretty heavy still. We're still actually, I'll show you a couple of pictures here. I also, like Al, like pictures, so, and many people do, so I, I intend to show you a couple of designs that we've already walked through. And as far as timing is concerned, we're, we're a little bit behind, but Bowin plans on April break to start removing some trees, putting up a construction fence, and getting a, a construction trailer on site, and just kind of clearing and marking the area. So, we're going to see activity over April break. 26 weeks is their estimated time. We had a meeting- We had a meeting today with the Massway staff just to break the news that everybody's going to be inconvenienced, but this is the timeframe that is doable. We don't want to rush it. We want things to be done safely and professionally and ready for them completely. So without further ado, getting some of the ideas. So this was the very first rendering of what the main office would look like. Again, stripped of colors, but we had, again, we were considering many different type of siding options, possibly other than brick. So this is what we seen first, early January. This is a rendering of the rear four classroom addition out back. I know it's kind of hard to get your bearings, but that black pad is the existing basketball This one, we asked for the front entry to be raised up a little bit. We talked about branding a little bit with the community, and we felt the high school had a really good defined entrance way. Why not use it in Massway? So that was one of the ideas we had thrown out. The top peak of the triangle up there is actually, is actually a huge skylight to add natural light into that area. As you can see, we're starting to play with a little bit more colors in the front. And this rendering here is actually as of today. Again, playing with more colors, a little bit more definition to the front. Skylight still exists. We feel that's a good touch. A new Massway mast flag was also being considered. I think it would add a little bit more character to the overall design. Then finally, at the back, this really takes shape and gives it a little bit more definition. So that's where we're at with the Massway build. Any questions on that in particular?
What, are you going to be getting to the job site through the, would you decide like it was along the side of the building? Or is it going to be back behind the backstop like we first talked about? Because I remember you saying only to take out one tree, so I'm thinking it's got to be on the side of the building.
Correct. Well, yeah, you were not the site walk plan, but the Town of Lee has a strong environmental community, and they highly suggested us not pursuing that because of the trailheads over there. So that got nixed really quickly. So we decided that we're going to still come off the front of the bus loop on 155 and go around the rear where the tennis courts are on the town property and along that, it's an existing walking path right now, but they're going to build up the soils there. And that is really only for access for light utility vehicles, box trucks, just because the ground's not going to be able to handle something like a steel girder delivery or cement trucks. Those are still going to be accessing through the playground itself, but again, those aren't like long, a week-long projects, but those will be carefully coordinated with the school staff, so there's no interference.
Do they have to use cranes for the steel?
I believe they will, but once it's on-site, it's going to be parked out back out of the way. So the other fun part was...
I was just going to say, I thought the last rendition you did of the front looks great, by the way.
This one right here?
Yeah, I think that looks really good.
Okay.
And I really like, first of all, it just is really inviting, you know, that front part. And I like putting the mast wing on. I just think it looks nice.
Thanks for your feedback.
Does this affect the floor plan at all? Has the floor plan changed from what we've seen in the past?
No, it hasn't. Well, the only other consideration that, a couple of the folks that is going to be occupying those spaces requested cabinetry of that sort, so we're, especially like in the music room with that, we have a small closet for her. She asked for additional cabinetry.
But in terms of, on the front side, traffic flow in the front doors and through the front office on the entry, that hasn't changed?
No. It's a sealed vestibule, so they have to be buzzed into the first door, then buzzed in from the sealed vestibule into the building. And there will be a window there to greet people as they come into the sealed vestibule. Yeah. I think the one change, Michael, that, from when we first talked about it, is the nurse asked to stay in her current location in the building. And so what was going to be a nurse's station will just be a conference room.
So part of the concern about that was the central...
Yeah. Catherine argued that her current location was more central than putting her in the administrative suite, the nurse. And, you know, her location is, so, you know, she has what she needs there, and she's relatively central to the building. So Carrie and Catherine came to the agreement that, you know, leaving her where she is works just as well.
And response time, that was, communication was part of the, wanting to co-locate those with the office.
Yeah. We don't anticipate that being a problem.
Other questions?
Would, did you say when the first, when they're actually breaking ground on this? Is it April break?
April break, you're going to start seeing activity, but you probably won't see an excavator go into the soil probably for a week after.
And that's just to build the road. So, you know, the April area, you'll start seeing construction come on-site to the back corner, getting rid of the trees, so they can do that. In the May-June area, you'll start seeing lighting happen. They're going to do that in the evening. And when we hit June, they'll start doing the windows and the front entrance. So it's all being staged, because you can't do that front entrance while the kids are still there at this point. So we start the front entrance when the kids leave, and then Carrie can redirect all entry to the building as we open in the fall to the back corner behind the cafeteria. So it's pretty elaborate, because you have three different vendor, contractors coming in. Bowen has agreed to manage all three projects, so that'll make it easier.
And is, will the kids lose use of the basketball court during this?
Basketball court is going to be ripped up, because it's right in the way and have to be relocated.
Relocated?
Well, they'll create a new one in another location on the property.
Okay. We're looking at that with our civil engineer right now, just because of drainage. We're extending the building out, and we want to find the right spot for that.
So this was all budgeted in the next fiscal year? Will there be, how much of the expense will be hitting before the end of June?
This was all budgeted after July 1st, with the exception of the grant money that's, I believe, available for us to partake into.
Well, the way the grant money works, Jim, is we have to use local dollars, and then, when we're done, we seek reimbursement. And the state has set up a reimbursement process. That's about as simple as it can get, which means when we have done that front entrance project, I sign off that it's done. The school board signs off that it's done. We send that to the state, and they send us a check. So we'll have to front-load that.
So my question is, how much will we have to spend before July 30?
So I would say that gearing up for the back corner is local money. Gearing up for the windows and the lights is the lease money that you'll approve tonight, so that won't be local money. And then, when we get to the front, that'll be local money until we get reimbursed. So we're, cash flow-wise, we'll be okay, if that's what you're asking, Michael.
Maybe it's a question for when Sue is back. Where does that, does that get recognized as part of fiscal year 18 or fiscal year 19?
19.
Even though it's spent before June 30?
Yeah. So what we'll do is, we'll work with vendors to bill us on July 1st.
Okay.
Unless it's Siemens, and that lease money is available to us immediately.
Okay. Ready to go to Siemens?
Yeah, to the six other projects that are happening around the district at the same time, besides the Massway build. So again, like Dr. Moore said, we had meetings with both Bowen Corp. and Siemens in the same room, along with their architect, just so everybody was on the same page. It could get messy real fast by having multiple contractors doing somewhat similar projects all at one time, so we wanted to avoid all that. So we felt transparency with everybody at the same table was very important, and we did that. And which, like Dr. Moore said, led to Siemens subcontracting with Bowen for the window install. So we have one major contractor on-site that's handling a lot of that. They're just paid from two different revenue streams. So as far as the Siemens project, we are signed. We do plan on starting at least the lighting internally mid-May. We want to start that over at Massway, just because of all the stuff that's happening over the summer, and then move on to Mohermit, and then finish up throughout the summer over at the high school. This is a little picture of the window that, or not, well, yes, the window that we selected. It's a Marvin Integrity Altrex. The other picture right next to it with the lighting, that's a Lithonia B L T series LED fixture. I hit those two. The five classrooms, well, the front three classrooms, which we call the facade wall with new windows and infill, which is, they're going to be building the wall out and restructuring the windows and that, so there is construction work that needs to be done. Same thing in classroom four, and then, four classrooms out back, which have those full window walls now that are going to be taken out. And that's going to be the big priority for the fall, for the summer. The window project is definitely going to go into the fall, and where the rest of the windows are going to be replaced like-for-like. Again, second shift as well to keep from disruptive, disruption. One of the projects that made its way back into this project was the Mohermit Library Glass Half Wall. So there's going to be bigger panes of glass now, making that a specific media center, completely closed off, but with natural light, and, which was requested the school a while ago. Again, the LED, we have the fixtures selected out, the odd house lights that are getting done as well. As far as the control for the lights, it's going to be automated. We're going to be doing occupancy sensors and dim down for emergency lighting in stairwells and hallways. Lot of cool stuff. Water conservation made its way back in too, so we're going to see on the next slide or two what that actually translates into dollars that we're going to be saving. Middle school duck cleaning and HVAC automation upgrades. I don't want to bore you with that. So this is where we're at, where we came in for our guaranteed savings.
When you say things made it back in, is that because you found you could do more for the amount of money that...
Correct. I remember how we couldn't just give you a hard number, like, we're still waiting for numbers to come in. We asked for different options with the windows. We're still mulling over what window quality and what light. So now that those hard numbers are back in, they, it turned out that they overestimated, not, I wouldn't say overestimated, but there was more savings realized, so we're like, hey, let's do some of these other things that we talked about that were really juicy, I should say, and we're going to give us more energy savings down the road. So that's how they made it back.
Great.
And this is where we fell. Again, this is our guaranteed energy savings. So as of now, today's rates, our savings is going to be about $80,000 a year, and these are how it's broken out. The next slide here is what that translates into kilowatt-hours, thermes, water savings, and propane. The little box underneath is what I wanted to use in comparison, so you really kind of get an idea where we're at, is actually, that's Mohermit's current consumption per year. So every year, we burn 219,000 kilowatt-hours. This whole project is going to be able to really take a building like Mohermit completely offline. So, and that's on their rates. Same thing with propane. We're probably about a quarter of that way. And water, even though you may think that, yeah, just because it comes from a well, we still want to be conservative with our water. That water is drying up from the ground somewhere, and the use is pretty significant. Financially, the good stuff. We originally were looking at a project with you guys for 3.75. We came in at 3.6. That's our financing directive that we're going for. The utility rebate is right now, again, it hasn't been signed or checks haven't been issued yet, because the project hasn't been done or started for that fact, but we're at 108. That's going to be in a check to us from utilities. And again, the energy savings is 80,000. That's the end of the PowerPoint, but one of the things I just wanted to mention to you guys is, when they do utility incentives for electricity, especially for lighting, they take what your current runtime is, what your current wattage is of the fixture, and how many fixtures are in that room. So when you do an LED, they subtract what the new wattage is going to be, keep the same runtime and the same amount of light fixtures. One of the things that we asked to be put in later, or at least considered, is a dimming option. So every classroom is going to have a remote dimmer for the lights. One thing that the utilities can't quantify is how often they're going to dim those lights, because that's hard. Like, what level do they dim at? How often? So this is only going to provide much greater energy savings for electricity than what's even on this, on the sheet. And how I know that is at the Massway meeting today, I was going through the light fixtures with the staff there, and I just said, "Everybody's going to have a dimmer." And I think I scored a lot of points, because it was like a, almost a standing ovation. So, and just so you know too, with the staff, it's, I'm taking the same kind of update on the road. So next week, or the week after, is going to be the high school. Following week is going to be over at Mohermit, and I'm going to be plugging myself into regular staff meetings to go through.
So basically, meaning just rough math, is the project is 3.6, and you have 80,000 per year. If you spread that over the term of the project, that's $800,000 savings over the term of the project, plus the rebate. So that almost brings the project almost down to 2.7. Is that roughly?
If you want to think of it in that way, other people think of it as like ROI, or years to pay back, which is a little bit more than most, because, again, the majority of these costs are windows, that you can see that there's not a whole lot more energy savings for. But, yeah, I mean, it gets better and better every time we look at this, because there's just continually more, more savings, especially on the electricity side. LED lighting is really phenomenal.
I think it might be, maybe a better way to think about it is that the energy savings pretty much offsets the interest over that period.
I'm just curious, there's both natural gas and propane at the school, and was wondering why both, and is one more?
Okay. That chart is the district-wide. So the projects that we're doing at high school, Massway, and Mohermit, those are the main projects. All the natural gas savings is for the high school only, because that's natural gas. The other two are broken up between Massway and Mohermit, which are on propane.
Which are propane.
Yes.
Jim, while you're up here, I just don't know whether, because we have a motion, or we need, we need to have a motion to approve the financing of this, is that right?
Yes. I'll do it. I have it.
Okay, good. I wasn't aware.
So...
I just wondered whether we should do that now, since we're talking about the Siemens project, or whether...
If you want to do it now, Sue did a lot of work with various vendors and came up with a very clear low bid. Siemens Financial Services came in at 2.845. Municipal Leasing Consultants came in at 3.49, and Harris Equipment Finance came in at 3.359. And so we're recommending that we go with Siemens Financial at 2.845%.
Denise?
So just the one question, which is that it's, the heading is Massway Project, but it's really...
It's the district, yeah.
It's all of it, so, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So could I have a motion to approve this financing?
I'll make a motion to approve the Siemens financing project.
Moved by Al, is her second? Second by Brian. Discussion?
I just had a question, like, the interest, the levels are, start with 125,000 and drop down then to the 34,000, and then, just explaining that concept?
Well, Sue's not here, so I'll give it a shot. The first year is, the first payment is interest-only, and then we go into interest plus the actual payment. So...
I think the reason for the dip is that after that first interest-only payment, the next one is only a couple months later. So you're only paying a part year of interest in that 34,000.
Okay. And then there's the...
Thank you, Michael.
And then you get back at the normal, normal...
Thanks.
Gotcha. Thank you. That makes sense. Other questions?
Scratch, we had about that for a while.
So are we ready to vote on this, or?
Were both of the MLC and the BMO also for disagreements?
Yes. Yeah, that was all apples to apples.
For the questions? Hearing none? All in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. The motion passes? Okay?
Thank you.
So just quickly, school committee assignments, is that where we are?
Yeah. Student senate.
Student senate, I'm sorry. Patty?
Yeah. Just a minute. So last Wednesday, we had a blood drive held here and got 17 units of blood. Each one can save three lives after it's split up, which is great. We also have continued to do bystander training. We had that this past week. The one-act competition was a couple weeks ago, but the, but the show in town was just last Monday night. It went great. Spring sport practices are in full swing and going great. The current quarter, quarter three, ends on next Tuesday. A fun thing that the seniors do every year is write their senior wills, and they leave things to underclassmen. And they've been, it's published in the school magazine, and they've been doing that. Each quarter, the magazine hosts a coffee house, and that's being held this Thursday, and for the first time ever, they're having an art gallery at the same time, so people will be able to see the performance, see the music performances, and also the art that's been done by their fellow students.
Is that next Wednesday, Patty?
That's this Thursday.
This Thursday.
Uh huh. The senate elections are on April 9th, which I believe is next Tuesday, which will require, will end up having shortened classes, and we'll have class meetings to elect our, our senate members and presidents and so forth. Rehearsals for the spring musical Grease have begun, which I am in, is very exciting.
Who are, who are you?
And as has been mentioned, on April 9th, the Durham Police presentation about social media awareness and including bullying and technology, technology addiction for students will occur, will be on next Tuesday at 6:30 in the auditorium here.
Great, thank you.
The Mouth of the River published a nice article today online about the role and characteristics of the student representative of the school board.
Yeah.
That's good. I have a question. Just going back to the, the Coffee House Art Gallery, what, what are the hours for that?
I believe.
They're usually six to eight.
Yeah, usually six to eight. It often goes overtime, but.
And is that open to any?
Anyone can go.
Or is it strictly, you're just students, it's?
No, anyone can go.
Okay.
So I had a question relating to the homework workshop, whether you working with Suzanne could, could, I would, what I was imagining is it'd be good to have some students take part in that workshop. One of the goals we've had was to hear from students more, not, you know, to get their point of view. So whether you and Suzanne, whether we could have like five or six students who might come and speak at the first part of that workshop? I don't know how people feel about that. And I thought, have them answer some of the same kinds of questions that we posed to the, the homework committee, in terms of, we could review those questions, and they, we also would have that survey that they could respond to, yeah?
Can you break it up across grades? Because, you know, when you looked at that chart that you did homework, there's some peak areas, so, so can we get like a freshman, a sophomore, a junior, and senior, just to kind of get a representative group when they talk about homework?
Okay. And then the idea, you'd be the first part, that you, so you wouldn't have to stay for the whole thing, but we could, you know, you could have the first crack at it.
All right.
Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, can we move to the, the school board assignments? All right. In your folder, I think you have the current assignments. I don't know if people had desire to change. It occurred to me, and Jim, I'd get your, like, to get your point, you know, with, with the movement towards one-to-one and the kind of curricular issues involved in technology, whether we should have a board member on the tech committee?
That'd be great.
And I don't know who, somebody would like to, to do that, but it seems to me that that's certainly going to be on our radar for the next year, year or so, in terms of moving, if we're moving towards one-to-one, what does that mean? What will that take?
So that committee is meeting sometimes twice a month. It's meeting at the end of workday, and so, and it's lasting about 90 minutes, so the commitment would be once or twi, twice a month from 3:15 to 5-ish. So that's, that's.
District tech.
The technology committee.
So is there somebody wanting to do that?
You want to do it?
Nope. I can't.
I can, I'll do it.
Al?
Excellent, Al.
Okay. Other than that, I mean, are people comfortable, I mean, it's good to have some continuity from year to year on committees. I'd be okay to stay with the ones I'm on. Is anybody else desiring a switch, or?
What form do we think the facilities committee will take next year after we move beyond the work department?
I think that it then becomes an internal board committee, because I think you'll have all the data in the world, and you've got the recommendation from the broader community committee. So I think that it should be a, a working group from, from the board to try to narrow what we're going to present to the community at that point.
So would you see it as a subcommittee of the board?
I think in that.
So these, so the three could stay together as a subcommittee of the board? So, okay. So if everybody's okay with where they are, I think, and also we'll have, for the negotiating committee, we'll have the teacher contract next year, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, that's getting a big.
Yeah, next year is the last year of the teacher's contract, so we'll, yeah.
And possibly, we might even, what we did last time, as we started, work on it, you know, I think the late spring, right?
Yep.
So, so that's coming up pretty fast. Okay. So with the addition of Al as the, the tech, for the tech committee, could I have a motion to approve, you know, the continuation of the committee assignments? Denise?
I motion to continue the committee assignments with the addition as noted.
Moved by Denise, second by Brian. Okay? All those in favor, raise your hand. Six in favor, student rep in favor, the committees are assigned.
Somebody didn't vote.
Seven in favor, seven, I'm sorry, seven in favor. So we're moving to foreign language?
Yeah, and there will be a quick meeting. I just want to just bring you back to the presentation that Todd Allen made in relation to having a workshop with the world language staff last week. And initially, we were thinking that this would be an expansion of the program into grade five, but all of the world language teachers met with a consultant in Todd last week, and their, their big issues were class sizes at the middle school currently. I think we have eight classes that are 26, 27, 28. And so they really wanted, if the board was going to address world language, they wanted to address that issue. And then the other major issue is continuity, grades six through 12, because they feel that the current structure for world language is a traditional structure that's been used across the United States, that does not bring students to fluency, and they want to work as a group of six through 12 teachers to reimagine the world language program, so that when students go through the program for the seven years, six through 12, they would be fluent. And so they want to come back at a later date and do a presentation to the school board around their objectives and how they would achieve them. So really, it's not a presentation tonight as much as it is just to put a marker, if you will, in time to say that the world language people really want to come back to the board and do a formal proposal on how they would improve the program. Can I, I mean, first of all, it's like depressing to know that my peak at learning foreign language left me 40 years ago. But, but when we do it, can, in the presentation, it'd be really helpful to look at how the expansion of the foreign language or change it fits in the daily schedule?
Mm-hmm.
Because I don't have a good idea how that is, and it's like, I mean, I know that, I always feel like we keep adding, it's like the, the problem of the addition of one more thing. It seems on paper always to be a good idea, but actually, sometimes it's difficult. So how does that actually, since we have a finite length of the day, how would the expansion fit in? How does the rest of the foreign language fit in? It'd just be super helpful to see how that fits, I think. We can do that.
What do you think the timing is for that presentation?
Well, they're very, they're very excited about doing this work, so I think that we could probably have a presentation. So we're in the first meeting in April. I think if we gave them to the first meeting in May, they could come back and do, they're, they're pretty, they're pretty charged. They left the workshop with Todd really in a very aggressive and assertive way, because they really wanted to get to you in order to make sure that the changes that are made are the changes that they feel are best for our students.
Actually, I, I think they could be ready for the next meeting. We're, we're actually meeting on Monday, and they're, they have their, they're ready to go. If you told them tonight, they would have come tonight. Really, they're very excited about the work they're doing, so I, I have no question we could be ready for the next meeting, but if it's first meeting in May, that's fine too.
So if we have that option, that's great, Todd, but I want to make sure that we have, we have a schedule that we promised the board we'd get to, so if we can squeeze it in in the next meeting, that's great. But I just wanted to give some flexibility, because Tom and Denise and has really, have really put together, we've got to get all of this work done by the end of June.
So are we thinking like about maybe two stages of hiring that, to show, because I mean, we have these big class sizes, and really, I think foreign language, I think there's a case for having smaller classes in foreign language, because if you want to have inter, interaction and conversation, and we were just in, in Portsmouth, and they had this one foreign language class of 30, you know, and they, you know, that just seems crazy. So will, will it take like an additional position to bring the class size down to reasonable? Then, then, that a second bite of the apple might be safe, you're going to go to fifth grade, that might be a second foreign language position to, to, to extend it down to. So the, the idea is that we really have to take care of what we, what we have now before we expand, is that?
It's exactly right, Tom.
So maybe just one, one follow-up question. So, so would we meet again, would we be approving the hiring of an additional foreign language teacher?
That would be what I would hope. When they get done with the presentation, you guys will all be wowed, and you'll say, this is exactly the direction we should go in, and you'll support the addition of a, of an additional world language teacher for the middle school.
Okay.
But that additional teacher is what Tom is saying, it's likely to be, it's not the expansion of the program, it's really bringing the size. To support the current program. Okay. That's their first priority. Okay.
But that certainly doesn't preclude that, you know, an additional year then to bring, to bring it down.
Exactly.
That's great. So that, so we'll have to figure out when that's to be scheduled.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Mental health, I'm sorry, again.
Maybe, which, this is new, and certainly it'll be good to hear, but just to hear too what happens to kids that are exposed to the language program through the Confucius Institute?
Yep.
And what, what happens if there's some, in their kind of progress through that? Because I think this, this is part of that discussion as well.
Will do.
Okay. K-12 mental health framework?
Yep, and so.
Thank you, thank you for your patience, sorry to keep you waiting so long.
So I introduced Heather McEnoff, who you've seen a number of times over the years. Ryan Long might be a new face. Ryan's been with us for several years now, and is the psychologist at the high school. And so, you know, I shared with Heather that we really needed to bring mental health to a presentation at the board level, and she said, we're ready. And so she and Ryan presented a framework for me that I thought the board needed to see, because we've done a lot of work in mental health, it's been a priority for the board now for three school years. And we've gone into like what I would call event programming, but now we're at a place where we have a system that we want to share with the board that we want to implement, so. Heather?
Hello. So I'm here with Dr. Ryan Long, school psychologist at the high school. And he's going to be talking a little bit about the shape system assessment that we're doing with mental health wellness. But I first wanted to kind of take a few minutes to review kind of what we've done over the past three years, both to kind of remind people and for the new board members. When we first started our work, we focused in on building capacity within our systems to support our students. So we started working with NOM New Hampshire, specifically Ann Duckless, who's been a great resource to us. And we also worked with Dr. Robert Macy from the International Trauma Center. So he came and did a training over the summer, as some of you may recall, we trained about 40 of our employees in the district, from district administrators, Jim was there, down to some paraprofessionals, so it was a pretty wide range of staff. We then began to implement the Connect Gatekeeper Suicide Prevention Training for our staff. And so we've been moving through the district employees. We're at a pretty good place in year two. I think we probably can wrap up our employees next year, so that's a pretty good training schedule. And I think that in addition to kind of building our capacity, Jim mentioned some of the, the events that we did. So we had Judge Broderick, former Supreme Court Justice Broderick come, with Barbara Van Dalen of the Change Direction Campaign to launch their New Hampshire campaign, and that was in the fall. And we've also used the YRBS data that we've received during that time to kind of inform programming. So a couple of the things that we've looked at would be the bystander training at the high school, that's a direct result of those results. And then also, we expanded the SOS, Signs of Suicide, which is a student-based prevention program for suicide prevention, to the high school this year, so we've used some of that data. A lot of our work dovetails with some of the other initiatives in the district, for example, the Social Emotional Learning Committee that's been working on the programming for K-12. The K-12 Counseling Programming, we've been looking at curriculum mapping and kind of aligning those K-12 competencies that we're all doing, so it kind of all comes together. And Ryan really laid out a pretty good framework of how to kind of look at mental health supports for students. So I'm going to let him kind of talk about that, and hopefully, he can answer a lot of, any questions that you might have.
So in looking at the framework for what a lot of schools are doing right now is taking the concept of mental health and how it would be mapped onto a framework of multi-tiered systems of support. So it's not dissimilar from reading, writing, and math. You would do universal screening, you would find a selection of students who would fall into the tier-two at-risk range, you would screen that further and winnow down to tier-three students. Excuse me. Tier-two students typically would get targeted group instruction or targeted group intervention, and tier-three students would get individualized intervention. Tier-one students get intervention as well, but it's, it's classroom-based, and I'll talk more about that in a minute. Putting mental health into this framework, though, it's, we wouldn't be the first to do it. It's recommended at the Office of Student Wellness, which is an offshoot of the Department of Ed. One of the things that, I'm going to talk about two different things tonight. The first part is trying to just giving you an overview of what a multi-tiered system of student supports looks like when mental health is applied to that system. So that's the first part, and just be patient with me, because then I'll get to the part where I talk about sort of what we are doing right at the moment, and that's probably the question you have on your mind right now. But this will all go very quickly, it's only 15 slides. The, one of the components of a good multi-tiered system of student support is that we're talking about data-based decision-making. So universal screening for mental health things like anxiety or depression, you know, we, those are areas that we're going to be looking at, but we, we base our decisions on data and not anecdotal, one or two cases that, that might be very compelling, but you're making big decisions that are going to affect teachers, that are going to affect all of the students, and we want to make sure that we have data to support why we're making those decisions. These are some examples of norm-referenced, low-cost, some of them are free, screeners. They're, they can be used at different levels. I know that our Social and Emotional Wellness Committee is, is recommending, or they're strongly in favor of the, the top one there, the DEVERO Student Strengths Assessment, that's a social and emotional screener. It's eight questions, if you wanted to think about how that would look. A teacher fills that out for each student, it would take them about a period for a class to fill that out. These other ones are, are more specific. I tried to put the categories that they might, that they would assess, and then the grades that they would be relevant to. This is a small sample of all of the different types of screeners that are available out there, that we could use. So the other part of a good multi-tiered system of student support is that we're talking about our interventions being evidence-based. So that's, I'll talk about, that's kind of where we are right now, looking at that, but these are some examples. Evidence-based as. as we're going to define it, is that it could be found in a national evidence-based registry. There's some listed here, like blueprints for health development. There's the National Registry of Evidence-Based Programs, and What Works Clearinghouse are three, but there are many more. If you're looking at something like Open Circle, that has a good evidence base. And how they define what makes it a good evidence base is that it's been exposed to randomized controlled trials and it's shown effectiveness. Bringing in the bystanders, something that we've recently done, that has promising evidence at the college level. They're, we're applying it to the high school level. Signs of Suicide is, was found in a couple databases. And when we talk about group counseling, you know, when we're talking about group counseling, if it's psychoeducation or if it's based on cognitive and behavioral principles, then it is evidence-based. If you're talking about tier three individual counseling, which we do a lot of, that, if that's based on cognitive and behavioral therapy principles, then that would be evidence-based as well. Motivational interviewing is another therapeutic approach that can be used in schools. And there's solution-focused therapy, and there's a whole bunch of other ones that are all evidence-based. So in tier one, to think about how that would look for mental health, it's, can be taught in classes depending on the, the grades. I would think that that lends itself easier for elementary and maybe middle. But we, you know, in high school, I think it can be done, too. We have flex time, we have advisory, things like that that comes to mind as an opportunity for tier one instruction, intervention for emotional or behavioral needs. Assemblies and community presentations certainly count as tier one. But it's part of the curriculum and you see it reinforced and supported school-wide. So if you think of what PBIS looks like, if anybody knows what that is, Positive Behaviors and Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. That was a, a type of multi-tiered system of support. So that's, and that would be very school-wide. It's, it has deep penetration, like students walk down the hallway and if they pick up a piece of paper, you might give them like a bulldog buck or something like that. You're just reinforcing and complimenting students. You have a, it's about school climate and creating a place where students feel comfortable and safe and we're reinforcing the behaviors that we want to see. That's what I mean by reinforced school-wide. In tier two, we're looking at groups of selected topics, maybe anxiety and stress management comes to mind as something that would potentially be relevant for us. And those students that would be selected, that, it could be a number of ways. I mean, it could be self-selected, it could be parent referral, it could be a teaming process where we meet as a team and look at different things like frequency of nurse visits or absences. And we look at that data to identify students who potentially could be at risk and sort of investigate those students a little bit closer. And also the screenings. I mean, screening tools would certainly help in that as well. But tier two interventions, you know, again, if it's, some examples of like cognitive behavior therapy-based ones would be like managing panic and anxiety for adolescents. There's a learning to breathe mindfulness curriculum. Mindfulness is incorporated in a lot of these treatments at this point. So, you know, I can, it comes to mind a visit to Colorado. The Denver Public Schools had this learning to breathe curriculum and they're doing it in all of their schools. So it, things like that that are, that are doable, it's been done elsewhere. It's not, we wouldn't be pioneers in this. And then your tier three stuff would look like, they're indicated services. These are students who we have identified as already exhibiting a high rate of, you know, significant problem symptoms, interference, behavioral stuff. But we, at the tier three level, we're looking at individual behavior plans. We're looking at functional behavior assessments, which we do now, but that could be conducted by a behavior specialist or a school psychologist. Individual counseling, there's, the idea of individual counseling at school is, well, I'll talk about that in a minute, but school counselor, school psychologists can provide some level of individual counseling. And then partnering with outside agencies, which we also do right now, like having mental health therapists, social workers contracted to come into our schools and provide services directly in the school. And we're currently doing that. We have licensed drug and alcohol counselor and we have board-certified behavior analysts coming in quite a bit. So this is now where we are. That's the sort of framework that where we want to start as a mental health wellness committee, looking at all of the services that we do. So it gives us a way to rate ourselves and a way to organize. And I think that that's going to be helpful in our self-assessment, which is where we are right now. So we are looking at the School Health Assessment and Performance Evaluation System. It's called SHAPE. This is also something that was recommended in the Office of Student, from the Office of Student Wellness. It's free. We're conducting it ourselves. It's pretty thorough. It's online and our school profile gets entered into a national database that's aggregated in private, but we are then contributing to research and things like that, kind of like our youth risk behavior survey data would be. So what we, what are we actually doing? We're going to map our existing services and supports across all of those tiers. So we're going to just look at what are we already doing and where does that fit? Is that a tier three service? Is that a tier two service? Is that evidence-based? Is it not evidence-based but still pretty good? And do we need to replace it or do we want to change it a little bit? Or do we want to just keep it the way it is? That's sort of what we're looking at right now. We're, we're sort of operating under the idea that we want to be more critical than, than generous in our assessment, too. That we want to really identify areas of deficits. And if, and if even if they're, we're sort of doing it, but it's inconsistent, we want to consider that a deficit and that we can improve and become consistent and be confident about saying that we are doing it. So we are going to look at intended populations as well, gender, developmental level, race, ethnicity. Are our interventions targeting the things that we want them to target? Are, you know, what are our baseline and, what is it the data that we're using to take baseline levels? And how do we show improvement based on these programs? And the intervention delivery, who's going to do it? I mean, this is going to be a big thing that we're going to have to, that's going to be part of the equation of figuring things out. So there are four different self-assessments that we're doing as part of this SHAPE process. The school mental health profile is sort of a nuts and bolts. This was the easiest one. It's like how many students attend your school K to 12. Objective questions that are not hard to answer. So we finished that. Right now, we're kind of in the quality assessment. There's this sustainability assessment that's going to come after, which talks about the financial pieces. And then there's the trauma responsiveness. So the quality assessment, I'll talk about more in depth a little bit. Right now, well, there's the analysis of building-level teaming. So each building already does this. We have a team of professionals, multidisciplinary professionals that sit around and look at different types of data, reading, writing, and math. But as the different levels and how old the kids get, it can become more about mental health and, and behavior and motivation and things like that. So, and then we make recommendations that, you know, it could be, you know, we don't want to jump right to a referral to special education. We might want to say, let's, let's try this intervention first. Who could do that? Who couldn't? But let's see if what six weeks of group reading would do with that student with a reading specialist and things like that. And then looking at data to see if the student rises back up to not need that service anymore. So we're looking at resource mapping. What are we currently doing and where does that map onto our new framework? What is our screening procedures? What are, what are they? What do they look like? Our analysis of our evidence-based services and supports that we know about? What about the implementation of those? Is it being implemented with fidelity? Are we going to be putting a process into place that's going to make sure that it's being implemented with fidelity? Analysis of outcomes. And then just looking at our processes for database decision-making all around, within those teams. The school mental health profile I talked about for a second, but once, once these are done, it'll be easier for us to communicate what we're doing mental health-wise. This is just an, you can't even see it. I'm sorry. I don't know if I can, no. If you would imagine, I can read some of these to you, but if you look at the, I tried to put the graphic on there on the left.
Right, they have high to copy.
Okay, thanks. So you can see that, you know, in this example, which is just a hypothetical example, I don't think I can read it.
Everybody can have really great eyes.
But I think the top one there underneath the pyramid says like anxiety. So it looks like at this school, this hypothetical example, you would get a report that would say, yeah, we have something in tier one. We're kind of missing something in tier two, but we're doing a lot for that in tier three. And that kind of gives you a snapshot and overview. And then if you go down that list, if you have a magnifying glass, I think it says depression, it says behavior, it says different things. I'm just kind of drawing a blank because I'm nervous, but you can try to look at that. Does that make sense?
It does.
All right. So then when we get to this sustainability assessment, our team, our mental health wellness committee is probably going to rope in the administrators and things like that because we have to talk about funding our resources. Human resources, are we using them in the most efficient way? It's a very critical look at all of the available resources that we have. And then trauma responsiveness is sort of the last assessment piece. And this has been really interesting for me recently. I've gone to a couple trainings on trauma responsiveness schools. And one of the things that I took away from a screening that I went to last Saturday is that there's seminal study that shows these indicators of adverse childhood experiences, ACEs, they call it. But it could be things like listening to mom and dad have a fight or a very loud fight or constantly fighting. Or someone in the family has substance abuse disorder or someone in the family has a mental illness. But there's, basically, they winnow down these, to these 10 that you could screen for. And if students have like five, they're a much higher likelihood of having heart conditions when they're older. Or there's, there's a number of medical conditions, but also mental health conditions. And as I'm listening to this, one of the things that stuck out the most was that the seminal study that they did on, I don't know, 3,000, 4,000 patients at a hospital, they were like middle-class patients. It wasn't done in like Chicago inner-city schools. It wasn't, you know, some, it applies to, to this community. And so, you know, when we look at our trauma responsiveness, it'll be really interesting. But whole school safety planning is something we've probably already done pretty well. Whole school prevention planning, whole school trauma programming. Then we're going to look at classroom strategies, prevention and early intervention. But this all sort of dovetails and fits in with social emotional programming, which we're looking at as well. And it dovetails and fits in with preventative mental health care for the students. So where we are today, we're stuck, we're at the quality assessment stage. And it's, it's, it's a lot. It's, it's looking at a lot of things that we're doing and being critical. We've done our school profiles, but I think we're going to update those when we get it finished with the quality assessment, to be fair. And the beauty of the SHAPE system is that we can retake these little assessments anytime we want to and, and make sure that they're accurate. So I think that'll be a good way to communicate what we are doing going forward as well. That's it. That's my presentation.
There's a lot there.
Yeah.
Denise?
Just thank you very much. And definitely, very thorough. I appreciate all of this. Interesting that you just mentioned the trauma. And I, I missed that. I wanted to go to that and I was away on Saturday. But I want to make a plug for the movie Resilience because it does show the ACEs study and how critical that is. And it's only an hour-long film. And I think it would be great if that could be fit into showing it to staff or what have you, because it's, it was, I know when I saw, I have seen it before and very, very eye-opening, for sure.
Yeah, thanks. Questions?
Timeframe-wise, where, so it looks like the, you know, assessing what you have is pretty time-intensive. But where are we to getting from assessing everything that you have to saying, okay, now we really know where our deficits are, we need to add these programs?
That's a good question. I mean, I would like to think that we're going to have a much better idea of that at our meeting next week. And then I think, I mean, this is, there's, that's just, there's just one part of it. I don't know. I mean, I think, Heather, what do you think?
I think we would like to finish the SHAPEs, I think, this year if we can.
Well, yes.
So that we have recommendations for next year. The, the quality assessment is taking, I think, longer than maybe we anticipated in the beginning because the, the questions are very detailed. And then we are finding that we're trying to align what, say, the high school view of that question is, the middle school, elementary. So we want to make sure we're answering in the same way so that we have the, the information across the district is common. So I would say we definitely want to finish the assessment by the end of the year. So that would be June. I would say the beginning of June so that we can have the end report for the end of June.
I wish I was going to be here a couple more years so I could experience more of what you're doing. I'm so excited. Thank you.
I appreciate all you do. And, and I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but a lot of what this is, is a response. And it's dealing with kind of social, emotional, not wellness. And then we're trying to work with kids who are in that. And, and just, is there value to trying to get maybe earlier and trying to figure out why is there the social, emotional issues? Rather than having the services, how much are, besides, you know, student at risk, which defines some values in our students, is it a value to talk to our students and to figure out really what their environment is like, what their world is like, which includes home, school, friends? And, and rather than, you know, I mean, that's, it's kind of my approach in medicine is, yeah, I can treat someone with high cholesterol, or I can treat someone who's had a heart attack, but it's much better if someone's not getting into that. And I, to me, when we have mental health, and certainly the school's really important, and we have all private mental health facilities, I would love to see us keeping our kids healthier rather, or part of it. Part of it is keeping our kids healthier. And I can't think we could ever do that unless we really hear from our kids what's going on in their lives. Because like anything that comes from the top, we, we might be missing and might be using our values and our lives, which in kids' lives, you know, we hear the whole cellphone thing. I have no idea what it is like to be a kid with a cellphone these days. You know, for me, growing up, I went home from school and I didn't have to be online. And I think for us to learn from these generations, I think that is very formative.
I think if I could answer that, this framework is meant to be preventative. So looking at it like a tier one intervention, like Open Circle, for instance, would involve part of the day in every classroom, K through five, to meet in a circle in the classroom and talk about issues within the classroom. So it's, it is very preventative in, at the tier one level. Tier three is less preventative, probably. But tier, tier one is certainly preventative and it definitely involves input from students.
Which, I mean, that's great. And like as a board, we'll be looking at homework. You know, why are we looking at homework? We're looking at, is this, is homework causing problems? So really the information that comes from these little groups would be great to filter through to policy and to help, you know, to work with the board in that so we can make our district a healthier district. Yeah.
What were the comments? Thank you so much. Very thorough. It really gives a sense of the structure of supports and work you're doing. So thank you so much.
So just before Ryan leaves, I had the opportunity to share this framework with Dover superintendent. We had spent, spent a day together and was talking about this work that we started because I think that, you know, our work in mental health over the last three years has been replicated many times across the southeast region of New Hampshire as I've talked to superintendents. And so I shared this with the Dover superintendent and he just looked at me and said, do you think Ryan would come and do this same presentation to our executive team? Because he's, this is exactly what we need in Dover. We need to have a framework to hitch all of this work to. And, you know, it gets to the point of knowing what we're doing, being proactive and making sure we have the right programs and we have to be reactive. So Ryan said he would do that. And then I put a caveat in that should they offer him a job, he has to say no. So that is in public now. No matter how much they put on the table, you have to say, no. So we're very lucky to have Ryan, the psychologist we have in the district. They're really amazing people.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break. Okay, let's take a five-minute break. Kay, would you like to get started?
Yeah, I know.
Okay, we need a motion to nominate and approve non-continuing contract professional staff members as submitted by the superintendent. Denise?
I make a motion to nominate and approve the non-continuing contract professional staff members as.
Moved by Denise, is her second. Second by Brian. Discussion on this? Hearing that, all in favor? Please read.
I've got a question.
On the right side, it says criteria, C below, A or B. And I don't see any criteria below. Just curious as to what that means, the A and the B on the right side.
The A or the B refers to whether or not a non-tenured teacher has achieved continuing contract someplace else. If they haven't achieved it someplace else, it's a five-year period. If they're, so that would be A. And then B would be for those that they achieved it elsewhere and it's a three-year period to achieving continuing contract.
Thanks.
Further questions? Hearing that, all in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor.
I'll abstain just because it's kind of contractual, so.
Okay, sorry. Six in favor, one abstention. Kenny abstains. Motion to approve Voice River Middle School, High School, spring coaches and volunteers. Brian?
Motion to approve spring coaches?
Moved by Brian, second by Denise. Discussion. All of us in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Motion passes.
Just to add on the coaches issue while we're there, that the guild and management came to an agreement on the unified sports stipend because that had come up several months ago. And we equated it to the middle-level coaches. So that's all come to fruition.
Motion to approve list of policies for, let's see, we have one policy for second read, the payment for school meals. Denise?
I motion for, to approve for second read, policy EFAA payment for school meals.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Brian. Discussion on this? We've, I think we had, this has gone through a lot of discussion with the administrators and I think we have it all set. Ready? All in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, student rep in favor. Motion passes. School Board Committee updates. Do we have any school meetings? Facilities will meet this, tomorrow, right? Yeah. To continue with the middle school. So no committee updates. A public comment?
Hi, I just had David Buck, 42 Women Road here in Durham. I just had a couple of comments based on the presentations that were made since the first public comment. And one was about the Siemens project. I'm new to this. I haven't really been tracking it very well, but I was impressed with kind of all the energy savings and the, I think it'll be a great addition to our school system. One, two questions I had. One, I'm not sure if this is within the contracts of the various contractors, but the disposal of the various fluorescent lamps that are going to be taken out and replaced with LEDs, is that maybe a question about the environmentally sound disposal of all of those double NCFLs? They have very high concentrations of mercury and they can present an environmental risk. The other kind of question and comment that came to mind related to that Siemens project, is there going to be any monitoring or tracking or gauges or meters to actually quantify the savings, the energy savings and energy gains? I don't know if that's been discussed or not. If it hasn't been, I think it'd be a worthwhile conversation to have because it would be a great thing to kind of validate the decisions that we're making now about, about these updates. And also, I think it could be a great thing to include in the curriculum for our students to kind of be able to, if there's a dashboard of, of energy savings that we're, that the students are able to see real-time, they can, they can track changes during the day, during the semester, across the year, and kind of have a better understanding of energy uses and why and when and how we use those energy, that energy at the school level. So I think that could be a great addition to the Siemens project if it hadn't already been discussed. Final comment, not to beat what I think is probably quickly becoming a dead horse, but to, had a question about your, the use of data for a survey to, between students and parents that use cellphones exclusively at school. That kind of, that took me by surprise a little bit. Seems like it'd be a heavily biased survey towards just the users. So I was a little bit concerned about the use of that data and how it will be used to maybe inform your decision-making. It seems like there's an awful lot of data against cellphone use. And I have yet to see during this whole conversation, whether it's from the school board or from residents, any presentation of data that supports the use of cellphones as a learning tool in the classroom. I think the, the burden of proof is on, is on that, it's been referenced as the 35%. I'm not exactly sure where that number came from, but I think the burden of proof is on that 35% at this point in the game. And if there is no real data to support that, I think they should really just get out of the way and let the science and the data sort of inform our decisions about educational policy in the district. So I hope you would reflect on that and think about how we're going to be using the science as it stands right now. And I think we've heard from public health professionals tonight as well about the importance of data-driven decision-making in our educational system. So I hope you'll consider that as you move forward in your decision-making on that policy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Closing actions, then we have a few, we have these homework, homework workshop, next Wednesday. Wednesday, we have that regular meeting on the 18th.
Want to comment about that?
Sure.
We, that is the, at the, the 18th is when we have our non-meeting prior.
That's true.
So just to kind of mention.
At 6:30.
It's the, right. So on the 18th, it's actually 6:30, a non-meeting. And then.
And manifest, manifest will be at 6:00 then, right?
Yes, manifest is at 6:00.
Okay. Okay, so we have, we need a motion to go into non-public for, I'm sorry, what issue?
It's a legal issue.
Going to non-public for a legal issue? So could I have a most, which?
So that would be New Hampshire State Law, RSA 91-A, co-in-3-2 subset E, consideration and negotiation pending claims or litigation, which has been threatened in writing or filed.
That would be, that would be the category, right? Is that a motion then? Moved by Kenny, is her second, seconded by Mike. Okay. We need a roll call to go into non-public?
Dan Klein, yes.
Michael Williams, yes.
Kenny Rotner, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes.
Al Holland, yes.
Brian Sisneros, yes.
Okay. I think you're off the hook. Thank you.